All right, I'm going to call the order of the Hickok County Commissioner's Special Meeting for October 22nd. And I move to adopt the agenda as published. Federal motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment, any public comments? Is there any public comment?
I don't think so.
All right, so hearing none, we're going to move on to our approval of the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the October 28th regular meeting presented.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
You see, first here listed as I and B is a request to approve the hire James Avery of Ellsworth with the position of part-time janitor at the rate of pay of 5A on that scale.
So I have a question.
Sure.
I and B really pertains to this person, right?
Not directly, but yeah.
Well, I mean, it applies.
It applies to everyone.
Yes, right. So I almost feel like we need to discuss B, but first, but we might as well do it in this context. Is there? Is there something, why not hire somebody pending a satisfactory background check?
So what we've talked about is conditional offers where we extend an offer contingent upon their successful completion or results of a background check.
So that would make sense to me.
That's how, that's how we do all our hiring. We give the offer and it's all contingent upon the background check, if it's clear.
And this is something that's kind of has really ballooned over the last eight months or so. And that we usually would get a precursor, you know, just a glance from the chief deputy and then feel comfortable moving forward. But now it's come to this three different checks. And the only one we really have to wait on is that FBI check, the fingerprints, which we're, and we're not even in control of when those results come back. But the only real thing that hampers us is that person can't work in the annex and is being controlled by someone else, so.
So. So. What I was thinking though, I just want to make sure that this, you know, moving to approve the hire, this step, pending a satisfactory background check, that does everything that we needed to do, right?
Um, well, working with Michael and looking at your policies and your statutes, which I'm learning, as I knew, I'm Deana Gilbert.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I should come up with that.
Sure.
I've been doing this for some, so we're finding out that we need to, for this position of anyone in maintenance, we have to go through three background checks.
Yeah.
The FBI check, the state check, and actually Commissioner Clark helped me with this too. And also we do our own background check. So I'm learning, so bear with me. But what we do is we typically do our own background check and then we put an offer forward after it's cleared with all of you. And we put an offer forward to the candidate in writing with a contingency in that offer saying you have to pass these other, or through these other checks. The awkward situation obviously would be if we don't find that they clear, then we have to come back to them and we have to discharge them. So that would be the awkward part of this whole thing.
But wouldn't my way of moving forward cover that? It says pending.
So certainly, I think.
Pending a satisfactory background check.
Yes, we bring them aboard before that happens.
Yeah, but their official employment.
Doesn't happen until you have a satisfactory background check.
Right, I guess they could be considered probationary.
Well, they'd be probationary anyway for six months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't mean to cause a blast though. I mean, this was just a conversation I was having with Deana, but what was explained to me was though, that there were times when they were giving somebody conditional employment, putting them to work and not getting approval from the commissioner until the background check came. And if.
I think that's more dangerous than.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, we were just talking about somebody who told me that kind of hired, in fact, I thought it was you and you had the problem. Nevertheless, the issue, because there is, is that you now have employees hiring and firing without commissioner approval. Because if the background check comes back bad, didn't clear, they've got to terminate this employment. Well, the hiring, if they, if they allowed him to come to work on a conditional employment, he didn't get our approval until the background check came. They hired somebody without approval and then if the background check didn't pan out, they terminated somebody without approval. So, and that's, that's statute. The other problem is, is that if it doesn't come back satisfactorily and they say to terminate it and it doesn't come to us, we're allowing them to make a discretionary move in terminating him because not all background checks are bad.
Right.
I'll give you an example. We've got a 55-year-old applicant for janitor who, when he was 18 years old, had a girlfriend who was 15, had sex, and got convicted of gross sexual because of the age difference. Christie ended up marrying him a year later, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Do we really want to terminate him because he didn't pass the background check properly?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
55-year-old with a shoplifting.
So it's subjective to some.
Well, let's head, but if the department head says no, he's gone. And we say, well, if we had an opportunity, we'd probably left him here or vice versa. We don't want a guy with a gross sexual or a paper. But anyways, the other problem is, is that we really need to consider things like unemployment benefits. With the liberal nature, the unemployment office and whatnot, and giving benefits and whatnot, we've got to be careful that somebody that we hire on conditional that didn't clear the background check files for unemployment, their liberal thinking, they end up getting the benefit and we're paying for it. So anyways, my point is, is that there needs, I really think that we need to be involved in this and bringing this to our attention today, that this person has passed something.
Yeah. And I want to be clear, we would never start a person employed without commissioner approval. Now, that, to my knowledge, it's never happened. It's, it's the background check sometimes has been assumed, but always the start date comes after commissioner approval. And something like that, it's, I think it's always kind of been just, you know, acknowledged or considered that, you know, an unsuccessful fingerprint check is going to result in a probationary discharge, but it's never really been formalized that way.
So, so if you, if we did that, in other words, just as we're doing today, we have an applicant, he's gone through some initial.
He's passed the sheriff's background to take us back.
And we're going to hire him and he's going to continue to employ him on the condition that he passes that.
Well, that's not exactly what this says. What I was, because I did a little homework and what I was thinking was hiring him at this pay rate pending a satisfactory background check, period.
Well, I know, because there's three background checks, he's had two.
I, I know, but I'm purposely being vague here so that these folks can say, okay, he's passed this one, he's passed this one, he's probably going to pass this one.
If we call it tier one, tier two.
Yeah, whatever.
Use a tier two now.
I'm just trying to make it so that you're not hiring somebody without commissioner approval.
Right.
But there's some discretion there for you. You don't have to come back at every step. That's why I was.
And that's what I'm opposed to. If, if he's passed tier one, tier two, and you come to us and tell us that, then we approve with, with your motion, passes the background check, and he fails to pass tier three, he's now an employee and I think you should be coming back to us and telling us that we have an employee on the thing who didn't pass tier three for this reason, and at that point, we give consent to terminate.
We're keep.
Okay, you weigh in on that decision.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not only weigh in, we comply with the statute. You do not have the right to terminate without commissioner approval.
Right.
And that gives us two things, compliance with the statute and the ability to, to concur that this violation, this, this, whatever the violation was, that disqualified.
Right, just to the level of.
Consistent with your policy. So you're confirming it's also consistent with your policy, so it's a just termination here.
Right.
Yeah, I think for modest, we just don't want to make mistakes.
Yeah.
I want to make sure of things.
Well, I need to wait because we have.
The issue that I guess with this is just the timing. So they're concerned that they don't know when the FBI check is going to be completed. So do they, when we've got to this phase and you say, go ahead, but it's still conditional on that, do they start working or do they have to wait until they actually get?
Oh, no, I think that's the purpose of this, isn't it? The purpose of this is to put him to work now.
Yeah, rather than wait weeks and weeks, possibly. Because that background check can be, we've had six weeks sometimes.
You wouldn't even come to us today if you had to wait until tier three was completed.
Right, that's right.
You'd come to us when tier's about.
Exactly.
So instead of pending, I should say.
Subject.
Subject.
It's to, to clearing.
And that's, of course, my department's the only one that has these three background checks that they have to pass as well.
Non-juror's department and jail.
Well, they're to the state background.
Sheriff, no, we don't. Yeah, we have to do state, federal and we have to do same.
Say what?
So I'm probably different branch of state, but.
Well, we do the FBI check, which is what you're doing separately for other. Yeah, we have the NCI, the triple I check, which is state federal check.
I, the only distinction I make is that it's the court, judicial court.
They, they may do their own, same task too.
The passing's kind of cheap. It's. Subject to, yeah, but subject to.
Successful completion?
And success, successful completion of a background check. While he's typing.
Or whatever background checks are necessary.
But he wants to keep it potentially vague, which I don't have a problem. But our, our, the county's background check includes the state check. So why is, what's the difference?
Never did. It's only this year they.
So a court assistant told us when an issue came about, they heard that we had hired somebody and they, they hadn't been informed and had an opportunity to inform the main judicial branch and actually check the employee. They informed us that that's not, that's a violation of their rules and regulations and operations and that we can't have our employees inside areas that are subject to just the judicial branch.
What are they doing, Michael?
I, I think there's some confusion. We, we do the background checks, it includes the state FBI check. So the courts are doing their own check because they're a particular entity.
Which is probably. Yeah, but what are they doing?
They're doing the same check.
They're probably doing the same check.
Yeah.
The state check is an FBI check.
Correct. Well, I think, I think it's probably even a little bit more involved in that. Well, I think, I think we're, we're confusing the state of Maine's judicial branch versus the state of Maine's criminal background check.
What?
So I think they're just for their satisfaction, because we haven't seen this before either. So when we take, when we take an employee, especially the ones from maintenance, because they have to go through the CGS background check process because they're accessing those spaces that have CGS material. We, we, the detective comes to us, we run the state FBI check, the triple I check, the federal check, FBI check. And then when they're hired, they go through the fingerprint check. What that does is that, so if they, if they have an alias out there that isn't covered under, you know, they were arrested in Utah, same fingerprints, we'll get it, we'll get it back. They have an alias, they're D O. We, we hired him as Joe Smith and that's all his identification and it comes back clean, but he's really, you know, Joe Brown or Jim Stafford or something like that with those fingerprints, it comes, but we get that back. This guy's a felon with, you know, all these things that we didn't catch because that's that third staff. But I think what's happening is the courts are running their own, because we have no control over their operation, they're just running it again to satisfy their own needs for them accessing theirs.
Okay, so if, if you have to do the court check, who does the court check?
Well, the courts do them.
When you give them an applicant's name and they run the check and tell you what they're going to claim.
They have their own data sheet that we have them fill out and I send it to Travis Cody.
They do their own that?
Yeah.
And you don't know what that is? You don't know what the criteria is?
Same as from the same thing.
They just won't take, they haven't asked for.
I've never asked for money.
But I think they're just doing it themselves and so.
Okay, so.
It's like making some of this redundant.
Oh, sure.
I wonder if it is, of course it is.
Yeah, I can't imagine that.
Isn't it?
Because the fingerprints is something to do.
We've been doing fingerprints for a long time.
Well, it wasn't 10 years ago, Bob.
I didn't do fingerprints when I started in the.
No, it isn't.
But not for every employee, just, just for the ones that are accessing the D's office for the maintenance folks and jail, R C C and sheriffs.
Okay, so with all that said, I think that I'm going to move to approve hiring James Avery of Ellsworth for the position of on-call as-needed janitor at a pay rate of 5A, subject to a successful completion. Subject to successful completion of a satisf, of a satisfactory background check.
Does that open things up again to that unemployment situation like you said?
Can't avoid that.
Can't avoid that. I'm just saying you should, you should understand.
Be aware.
That the potential is there.
So basically.
Well.
Let me reread it.
No, I understand, I agree. I'm going to second it so we can discuss it. All right, so it's been seconded. All right. Now, the only caveat, of course, is that if there is an unsuccessful background check.
Or an injury. Or an injury, workplace injury.
Unless another.
Or someone, yeah.
As far as this.
There's risk.
You're going to come back to us if he, if he doesn't pass the background check. On behalf of the executive session, discuss it, nevertheless, before he's terminated, you bring it back to us.
Sure.
Well, and, and I didn't mean to pin this all on this. This is, this is, it just allows us to have the context to discuss this.
Right.
Well, do we need to amend any of that policies, Michael?
I mean, I think, one of the things we're working on anyway is to clarify our, our internal policies amongst all of us. So we want to minimize this as much as possible. That's what Deana and I are trying to work with the department at the law. But in terms of the overall policies, who approves and disapproves and all that, I don't think that it's really a change in terms of what we're doing. It's just a reiteration that, which is a little bit of clarification on the discussion, I guess, just that. Because as far as I know, this is kind of basically what we've been doing. And if we did have somebody that was excused or didn't qualify, we would notify them and I would presume we'd come back tell you that anyway, so that you, so we do have that confirmation, so.
Yeah. Some time ago, last year or whatever, you hired somebody and the sheriff, after the hire, the sheriff voiced his disapproval.
Because we went a different route for the background.
Yeah, what happened to that guy? Did he stay?
No.
Did you get rid of him because the sheriff complained?
No, he resigned.
Okay.
Eventually, the sheriff cleared him.
Okay.
Eventually, the sheriff cleared him. But again, it was this departure from protocol, which, which was, you know, kind of sent ripples through the whole system. And we ended up with, with what we're dealing with. Now, a year ago, we would have just done a precursory check to make sure there's nothing local and then recommended his hire. And then the FBI's check would satisfy everybody's concerns. But now we've got our detectives doing a pretty extensive background check, pretty comprehensive, followed by the state, who's now said they need to have, you know, the same or similar information. And then once they're onboard, we can bring them up to the jail, get them fingerprinted, and then that process begins.
Okay, all right. So I think my motion allows.
I think it satisfies the issue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, thank you.
So we've taught, we've put B the rest also.
Yes.
So Milton Cat would be installing, they installed the product.
Uh, yes, this is actually, this is two, there's two agreements, but one is, is covered by warranty. So we've got two generators covered in here. One, they're covering on warranty, our new generator. This service group for the John Deere is for Andy's portable unit that we've been using as a backup and deployed as a backup for the, since our generator failed a couple of years ago. And so that, the Milton Cat tech suggested rather than, so we'd be calling him in saying, make sure this thing works right and pay the bill on it, but he says, if you have a service contract, annual service contract, you're going to save some money and your machine's going to be ready. So that's why we thought we'd approach it. And this year, this, Andy doesn't have this in his budget, so I would pay for this this year because it's been in service for our use for, for this year only seems fair. And when he has a chance to budget, he'll take it over and probably move it out to the emergency operations.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve, move to approve the preventative maintenance agreement with Milton Cat as presented and authorized the chair to sign agreement on behalf of Hickok County. And I don't think that I need to put where it's being paid for because it's in somebody's budget.
No, but I wish you'd note that it's the John Deere generator. We went to approve two contracts.
Yes.
Schedule maintenance contracts of John Deere generator.
Just to be clear, this, this is the $1,100?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the other one had no financial.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't we take this out of ABRA?
True.
You already got a chance. We're going to take this out. Joel and I think we should take this out of ABRA. What do you say?
Sure. That, sure, if your staff doesn't have trouble with it, right?
I mean, I just refer you back to what your grant writer told you many moons ago, and the person, well, not grant writer, the Kitty Barbie Association Institute had hired to assist you with, where she weighed in several times about the revenue replacement proportion.
Yeah, so that's what you're talking about, yeah. Okay, so this is the motion I'm making. Move to approve the preventative maintenance agreement with Milton Cat for the John Deere generator as presented and authorize the chair to sign the agreement on behalf of Hickok County to be paid for using ABRA fund.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Snow removal.
Yes.
Excuse me, why is the other one in here against the?
I just, because it's to confuse you. No, because they'd sent me two agreements. And one was, was a warranty, the other was requested for that.
The warranty was part of the purchase.
Yes.
So it doesn't need our.
It really doesn't, I guess, no.
Essentially approved it when you agreed.
That's, that's true.
Is that a one-year maintenance?
It is, yeah.
So we'll give you the next year with this.
I will.
Well, I, I imagine that will be part of your budget.
Exactly. It'll be budgeted, but the request for the service will be made to the board at the appropriate time.
All right.
Uh, this represents a $300 increase from our automatic renewal, which is, seems acceptable to me.
It's the, it's just a one-year contract, right?
This is a one-year renewal. We have the option to opt out of this and go to bid anytime.
This makes sense. Knowing what. So I'm going to move to approve snow block contract with Larry Jordan and Sons Construction Incorporated for the 2024-25 snow season for the sum of $6,800 and authorize the chair to sign the agreement on behalf of Hickok County.
I'm going to second the discussion. If I recall correctly, Dennis, we get a one-year contract with George with the option to renew for two more years, each year for two more years.
Uh, yes, initially, that's.
Right.
That was the way.
But the renewal has to be at the same price.
We can back out of it if it's not.
Well, I'm just saying that that's, that's, we have a one-year contract with, every year with George, but they have a two-year renewal. If they don't increase the price, if we can renew without bidding. They've increased the price by $300 this year, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's not consistent with the contract that they gave us and technically it's not consistent with a bidding process. Now, we're facing the same situation today that we faced the last time we talked about this issue, and that is it's too late in the season to go to bid.
Well, and if we did, quite honestly, I don't think it would be this.
That's what I said, but bidding is all a hope.
I agree.
But the problem is, is that contractors, buying contractors have their list already, they have their list, we can't.
Well, no, we decided this was too much, we'd really be at risk. But the time, as discussed prior, to go out to bid would be in July or August. And then wrap it up by the end of September. And I, my feeling was, if we get a contract that's outlandish, that's unreasonable, we are going to deal with whatever, the same as we did, and then we're going to go out to bid again.
But Dennis, I would suggest that you put it on your calendar for 25, June 29th.
And refresh the sign.
Miranda, are you going to renew this for the same price? If not, tell us today because you cannot.
I will.
Because we can't, you're setting here first of November, looking at.
Yeah, and then they send it at a time. You're right about that. The timing has kind of been in their favor. So I'm making it to revisit in August.
Whatever, how much of a time you need to, to rebid.
Yeah, I think that's answer.
All right. Maybe at some point, once we get less of the snow, the price will actually go down.
I would wish.
Like, you know, they do less and less work.
Intuitively, you say that, but what we deal with now is ice. And we, we get a little snow, it ends in rain, and instead of snowfall, we get three courses of sand and salt around here, which are, if they're charging us, would be, you know, 500 bucks a whack.
Yeah.
And it's the devil you know or the devil you don't know, I guess.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I understand they're going to set paving today?
Uh, they're going to be here for the initial setup, so they're going to.
They're going to start up above?
They're going to start up, I think, up above. Of course, that was their plan, but they didn't realize that we were all done down below. They may decide that, so we're kind of to see what.
That's the initial work they need to do.
Uh, they need to do some cleaning, grounding, they blow out all their areas, they're going to rope off whatever. They make their plan to rope off tonight, whatever. My preference would be start the jail, get the jail done. And then, or it's the DA's pocket line, and then that sets the tone for everybody. So that's what we're going to push for.
Area wise, is that big?
No, but it, it tells everybody, be ready to move tomorrow because here it is.
All right. Let's move on to our.
Uh, we've got two, two responses. Nicholson O'Day and E O Shea with Louis Mal.
Please open those, Dennis. How do you, what kind of criteria is used to decide?
Uh, well, what's in those packages is going to be a lot of it, but we're going to, these packages are going to give us, us a bunch of questions that we will then take to the bidders and probably have them present at the next meeting what they see as their best answer to those questions.
Does it come down to dollars? Does it come down to?
It comes down to all, yes, it comes down to, we won't have any dollars until we decide who's going to give us that not to exceed price.
Right, and that's long after.
That's after.
You can't, you can't get that from bidders because they're not going to spend that much talent. You can't, you can't get that from bidders because they're not gonna spend that much talent.
This would be the same scenario we used with the ICC job, where I think they, they phrase it as contractor at risk, which means they, we, they give us that not-to-exceed price approved. If it goes over, then it's their risk.
But on the ICC, what we, what we faced with urgency situation in that we had to change architects in the middle of the job, not the ICC, I'm talking about the steps. Wasn't that, wasn't really the design switch? Wasn't, wasn't the, uh?
The steps, we started with the ramp approach.
Yeah. No, no, but halfway through it, we got rid of the architect we had, had to go to new architect. That's when we went to contractor at risk, because that's when they hired Shea and it didn't work.
Right.
So we, we've been through this once, but the difference was, is that maybe we made some exceptions on the architect because we didn't have time to do all the RFQs.
See, yeah, that, uh, the, the way it was is that steps were supposed to be done as a part, first of all, the ICC built out originally, which didn't happen because we, we scratched the addition and moved it all into existing space. And then it was gonna be done as a part of the ramp job, which we, again, got scratched. So we were like, what are we gonna do about these steps?
The steps are a really good separate job. It's supposed to be part of the RFV, but it got separated.
Right. Due to, due to irrelevance, it was no longer part of the scope.
Okay.
All right, so we're not opening up this room.
And that should be a book, book of peace for each.
Again, a little confused here. I thought we were looking for architects who's going to select their contractor. Here we're getting a contractor who's gonna select.
So their architect, they have an architect that they're, that'll be in their proposal. So if it's not, I mean, what do they do? And it was pretty clear, we wanted a design-build team to respond.
And that's what we got here?
Yes.
So native company, E O Shea, but it's still a.
Oh, it says.
Title right there.
Yeah.
Louis Mal, E O Shea team. Now, was this something we're looking for here, Dennis, that would?
Uh, overall, was looking for their, uh, approach and their ability to quickly get us that.
Nothing for us to.
Yeah, we used to.
There's a million Dennis talkies, we need to tell us.
Yeah, and there is one.
But there's nothing for us to look at.
Like, having land today? No, this would require some study.
Yes, that's, we're not looking at dollars.
Right, this is gonna require some studies, yeah, some comparative analysis.
So Dennis, you mentioned about them coming back and doing a presentation. Is that still, regardless of your review, that's gonna give you sufficient time to have that happen? So we would invite them back? Is that your plan?
Yes, hopefully for the November meeting.
No, I just wanna make sure.
What we said in solicitation, we, we're gonna, take our steps as appropriate, or as.
As they could.
Or as comfortable doing so.
There's.
Can I explain to myself?
Yeah, was there only four?
There's five.
Oh, you have one.
I requested five.
I know where, I know where, you know where we could.
Yes. We have an extra. Up here, this next, okay? That's it, that's it.
Thank you.
So we, what I did is I asked for a three-year, because our current term will end in 2027. So I asked for a three-year price or a five-year price, which they give us both. It speaks with members of the, the fire association to see if it was something they wanted to continue unanimously. They, they also asked, those are spoken to. It's been a great tool for us. We should use it several times during pyroditch or other incidents where radios weren't working. Well, if, and they've, a couple of incidents, they use the mapping portion of that to find locations because Google Maps isn't as good as the mapping system. The, I think I mentioned this last time, we spoke, the ATV accident in Township 16, they were able to find access by using the system, the mapping. I've also actually had Northern Light express interest in possibly not being on our system that's having access to department information to find incidents as well, because they could not find that particular machine either, without calling 911 over and over again to get the location. So they did send back those prices, which I, I don't have to recommend it. I mean, I can obviously, you know, five year would be great, but same time.
I forget, was our plan initially after the contract, how was it gonna be funded?
It was gonna be added into the C budget, taxation.
So if you took the five-year plan now, can you?
Yeah, so it wouldn't actually start until 2027, so we would actually, if we did the five-year addition, we would be paying.
We could pay for that now?
Yes, yeah. They, they did initially say they would, you know, payment at the end, but we could pay ahead of time, so that would put us on 2032. I would be retired. You know, you choose to do that, and I just let them know they send us the contract.
Does it include, uh, gentlemen, Winter Harbor?
It does.
This time?
It does. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the, that's everybody we have now.
Yeah.
So everybody, all county towns?
Yeah, I think there's only one or, one now that is, because they're so small, they, they go together, so they're kind of, you know, aror, aror. Between the two of them, you know, some people, so they're, they're, they go to each other's call.
So, you ready for action?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm gonna move to approve dime responded quote for the term of five years for the sum of $84,938. Such as somebody paid for from ARPA funds is requested.
Should we notate that that would commence on?
Unless it's May of 2027.
We've gotta, we've gotta finish out the contract we're on, Paul. I'm curious if we should notate that it's gonna commence.
Well, the reason I didn't was because it's in this agreement, and I'm just, I'm approving this agreement.
To basically, uh, just an, an extension.
It is an extension to the current.
As a five-year extension.
Yeah, so.
It says that.
I don't think it was there, but it does.
For the subscription renewal, but, uh.
Probably you have to open another computer early this year.
I don't think it actually says that. In my correspondence with her, because I wanted to clarify, uh, before she sent me this, was, uh, your request for annual renewal agreement, and the services will continue through 2032, so our current agreement ends, uh, May 14th, 27th.
So I don't see any time in ten and eleven, it extends to May 2015.
Yeah, May 14th, 27th.
The only thing that we may need to double check, though, is the timing and how that relates to our use of ARPA funds for this. Because you're extending it beyond, really, I mean, you need to pay it now, you're still extending the time pay period for the location beyond the extent of the grant period, which makes an issue, and we have to look at that, I guess. Not saying you couldn't vote today to try to do that, but we would have to confirm, probably try and best we can confirm that would be. Whereas, I mean, that, it, it may be a fine line, but if it doesn't explicitly state that it's an extension, then it's really a new renewal of the subscription, that's a fine line, but grantors look at it different ways, so.
We don't have, do we have an actual contract? This is a contract?
This is, we don't have an actual contract for this one.
So maybe we should defer action on this, and, and this should be structured as an extension, not a new contract, so that.
Right. What we're citing is listed as an extension.
Yeah.
So we can get together and see what we.
Yeah, that's probably.
Wait another couple of weeks.
Not gonna hurt.
Yeah, that we're, we're covered to 27 now, so.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna, it wasn't seconded anyway, so it's dead. Uh, so we're not gonna take any action, or do you want action to table it forward or?
I mean, at this point, whatever we're bringing back is probably gonna be a little bit different now anyway, right? So if that's the case, probably we can do it. It's really your preference.
Yeah, I, our intention is to do what we can. I, I think this made a lot of sense. This was a way to keep this on the backs of the communities using ARPA funds. And serves all, exactly. This is a good example.
That's been a great, you know, alternate tool. I will, I will reach back up to them, ask if they can, cause we're, this is an extension for this.
Well, I work with Michael this time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, unfortunately, I'd like to accept the resignation of Annalise Cray effective on Wednesday, October 30th of 2024. After 13 years, she is leaving for another job, unfortunately.
So I'm gonna move to accept the resignation of Annalise Cray effective on October 30th, thank her for her service for Hancock County.
Second motion, favor.
Aye.
Aye. You going to?
Uh, we posted the position last Wednes, uh, excuse me, last Friday. Uh, we posted it in-house and on jobs indeed. Uh, we.
I know in-house, I'm not sure.
Ian?
Did you post the position as well, uh, on Indeed?
Not yet. Um, there's a waiting period of 10 days that we do interview.
Read that closely, because it doesn't say you can't website. It simply says you must have 10 days before you can give it to somebody. So you can post Indeed, day one, you just can't give it to somebody on Indeed or another site until the 10-day waiting period expires.
Okay.
If you look at that closely, you'll see that it's never intended to avoid, to avoid that.
Okay.
So, you should be doing it, you should be doing it all the same though.
Okay, I'll do it today. Is that for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything's pretty unremarkable.
I really liked this.
Yeah, your summary is really good.
I really liked it. I, I worried that you weren't, you know, I'll put a lot of work in the rest of it, but I really loved the summary.
Okay, thanks.
And, you know, I, you went beyond what, what I was thinking, but if, if it's a lot of work, then it's probably not worth it. But if it's not much work, it's worth it.
Yeah, I'll try to do this on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, I, I really, you know, I, I hope it wasn't too much of a burden, but it's really.
I spent all my.
You two are late.
No, I just think this is a good thing to have in, in the file, and I, I.
I'm not sure, though, Paul, if you think about it, that, 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 that it's necessary in the first quarter. Sure, you know, I think most we get to the end of the year, we're concerned we should be becoming doing, because in the first quarter, it could be very misleading because you could have bulk purchases.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Halfway.
Buying cruises, spending all your reserve money or whatever. That would throw the numbers out. You get by the third quarter, they should, that should, so I think maybe half year and then certain quarters.
You say the in-between of that, maybe just the first two quarters, if there was something that came up that was concerning, so we knew it was gonna blow the budget, and that was an issue one way or the other, then maybe no doubt, but that would be much simpler than having that.
I would be more interested in you telling us, you know, May 1st, that we have a private, this kind of explosion.
Right.
They're gonna, they're gonna need to really.
Yeah, and I think as a group, we stay on top of things like that as well, you know, pretty much.
But I really like this format. I, you know, I'm not glued to, to, you know, when it happens, but when it does happen, this is a great reporting. So I'm gonna move to accept and file a treasure report as presented.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm, um, I'm going to propose two, uh, um, legislative items for ARPA funds. One is a EAP, which is Employee Assistance Program, and the other one is a climate survey. Any of you familiar with those before? Okay. Uh, basically, what they were starting for was individuals who had, um, drug and alcohol issues. And that was about 30 years ago. Today, they've evolved, and now they're focused on mental health. And if you read in the articles, including some pages of Time Magazine, Forbes, and Fortune, and whatever, they're all talking about issues in the country of mental health following COVID. So that issue's gotten worse. So they're talking about, um, walk through the PowerPoint, if you want to go through that. So essentially, what I'm looking at for budget on this would be about $5,500. And if it was for two years, it would be for around $10,000. And the purpose is for workplace balance, associated with mental health. But also, it is an organization that provides, all of these organizations I have put in front of you, are organizations that also provide support, childcare services, if you need to know where you can have childcare services or elder care services, or you might need, um, some assistance with student loans guidance. You could also use this for, um, trauma situations, which we have recently, uh, in our past experiences as well. So that kind of counseling where they can come on site and talk to everybody and get everybody together to talk about the issue, and also do one-on-one. They're also used in terms of, uh, dealing with what's called stress management and burnout, and that's been an issue across the country. And also opens up to, uh, improving performance management. So sometimes you might send an employee to the EAP to get some assistance to kind of balance out what's going on in private life versus their work life. And it also gets sent to their family, so it's not just to, it's also sent to the family. Um, so each one of the ones that I've looked at will offer, uh, five free sessions, which is great, and if you have a different issue, you can start that all over again. So we have paid for five, if we go forward with this, we've already paid for five free sessions for someone to go there. They can go there on their own, or we can, uh, assign them to go. So that is something that I think is really important to consider for the organization, most organizations, actually all of the ones that I've worked with have EAPs. And, um, the one that I liked the most was ESI. And the reason that ESI was my favorite, it's been around the longest, that was the three that I looked at, and it's pretty comprehensive. So that's the one I I favored. There's some of the stats around, uh, employee assistance program. I think, uh, I read that it was something like, um, forty-three percent of adults said they felt more anxious uh, than they did in the previous year, which is up to thirty-seven percent. Again, it just offers more than just one-on-one meetings with employees, but also they come on to site and they will do training. And often, they have training opportunities that are online as well for stress management or just different things that you might be interested in. So essentially, it's really to help us manage stress better in the workplace and in the daily life. Like asking for.
On the ESI. What's the specific cost of that?
So that was the one I felt was the best one, because I felt it was most comprehensive, and has a, uh, a, yeah, training, uh, online training that folks can use for performance management, leadership, supervisory skills to, um, obviously, stress management. And then resources, again, for all of those other things that you might need, childcare, assistance, legal assistance, financial wellness. Those are all things that you can get counseling for and, uh, support for.
What's the cost again?
Um. They're all around the same, they're around five thousand a year.
Oh, on on page two, the ESI says that it's five thousand a year, or ten thousand, right?
For two years, yeah.
And that's not the one in our book, but that's the one that was just handed out earlier. None of this is covered by our current practice.
No, I even called a agency, maybe they have an extension, because I know Cigna does, Cigna has an excellent program, which is one of the ones I looked at, they're a little more expensive. But no, they don't, and so that's why we wanted to look at these.
But if our, but in terms of, like, the regular healthcare benefits that the employees have, they do, we do have, you know, uh, health benefits.
Um. Yeah, also, I'm not sure, I didn't get a sense that they had anything like this. And I think this is, um, realistic for the organization. And, uh, it's also intended for the families as well, anyone that's living with them. So, uh, and it covers much more than just mental health. And so if you needed help figuring out where you can get childcare services, if you wanted assistance and figure out how to apply for student loan, or how to pay back your loan, this will be an organizational help with that.
So let me ask this, if we, if we supported it for a year, how will we be able to track? Or will we be able to track it all by the associates?
Yeah. That's a good question, and they give you utilization reports, which tell you that five people went in for family needs, ten people went in for individual mental health issues related to maybe alcohol, drugs, versus some marital issues or whatever. So you look at a utilization report that tells you that information. It won't be specific.
It doesn't tell you who, it just tells us.
I won't know the.
Type of service, basically.
Yeah.
Did you want to say something?
Well, no, I I just, I mean, obviously, through our insurance coverage, there are certain things related to mental health, but one of the big things with this is the accessibility, so as part of this, you'd have access to providers, whereas under everybody else's normal healthcare plans, I mean, you could be waiting months to be seen by somebody. Even if you get the referral from, you know, your private care physician, whereas this kind of sets you up to have, have that kind of be put in play, I think, much quicker than. And a lot of large organizations, obviously, have, that's part of it, have this type of program that they offer, and it's why many it's kind of weird that we would have an insurance company that wouldn't offer it, because many of them see the benefit of trying to do all this preventative stuff before you get paid for. Actual medical issues, health, stress, all of a sudden, things relating to issues that might be as relevant, so. But that's just aside.
Have you been anywhere that has this program?
Yep, I've been around work, yeah.
And is it a specific program or just an EAP, is that what?
An EAP.
An EAP, and I have, um, had a Cigna and ESI.
And it was utilized?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's private, I wouldn't know if you wanted to go, I wouldn't know that, it's between you and whoever you call. And so you'll get assigned someone, if you like that person, you keep going, if you don't, you can change to someone else. You can do it through Tell Health, so it can be a phone call, or you can do it in a meeting, or Zoom if that's your preference, and, um, it's also a referral service for some of the things I mentioned. So if you have a acute problem, they would see you for the times that they can see for free and recommend someone else that can be, uh, more, um, personalized to your needs with regard to a more acute situation.
So, in your experience, so you said it, utilize. If if it's if it really takes off and it's, you know, utilized, are we likely to see huge increases, or? I mean, I I right now, for me, this is somewhat of an experiment, because I don't I'm not subject to this.
Does it involve any cost to the employees?
Yeah.
Eventually?
It's free, um, after five sessions, uh, unless it, if it's still the same issue, then they can pick up whatever the cost is for that. So that does happen, but most people go there for just about five. That's why it's normally three, and I negotiated it to five.
This is all employee-initiated, this service is.
Yes, and you decide whether you want to use it or not. Somebody will promote it.
If you recall, we had, uh, we had a health benefit program, yeah, for a few years, actually paid employees for participating in certain annual doctors' business and so forth. We finally got rid of it, because we utilized it. I'm curious. I'm wondering, Dean, how difficult it would be to develop a brief questionnaire survey, give it to all employees, see what your response is, as to whether or not they would participate, and if they felt that they would use this, if the I'm a gentleman, we, I I agree with you, Paul. This is too much of an experience for me to just jump into today. I'd like to know that, especially if it's the employee that has to initiate this, that we can't I can't say it can't, I guess there are times like with, you know, shooting, for example, we may require counseling for us to utilize, but if this if this is mostly employee-initiated, I'd really like to know the employees can see the benefit of this, and they would utilize it. Yeah, I mean, I agree, but, oh, I think like, something like something that would happen within the sheriff's office, and I'm pretty sure the union contract. They have don't they have services? We provided.
This also will provide that as well, the same stuff.
We provided counseling, deputy got shot, and we didn't have to pay for the counseling, that was provided by people in the jail. Remember? How did that, how do we get out of paying for that?
Gentlemen, we ended up, I think we ended up having to pay for it, or Workers' Comp paid for it. Um, and it was a gentleman out of Brunswick.
Yeah, but I don't, it must be Workers' Comp.
I think Workers' Comp had to, I think Workers' Comp was to pay, pay the invoice.
But how about, uh, how about the deputies involved in shooting? Were they given counseling, and we have to pay for that? Remember?
Did take counseling, and I I filled out Workers' Comp for them as well, so.
Workers' Comp. So, I don't, that's just, yeah, I just, it's it's one of those, this is one of those things where I think all the intentions are good, I'm also worried that some of the things are already covered under different kinds of contracts, different benefits that, or, I mean, like, I'm positive, or do you guys have the insurance here as there, that you can see there, right, be shocked if you didn't, I mean, like, no, healthcare they don't have health services there. But I'm not saying I'm against it, I just.
More information.
Well. See this point about people referrals and all that's probably in the insurance. And Mike, where you were before Bang Order, they have.
Yeah, Bang Order had it, yeah.
Was it utilized?
For various things, it doesn't have to be just mental health, like financial planning, other things, uh, you know, debt, consolidation, you know, things like that, I mean, it was pretty diverse, similar to what these are, that, uh, people were able to take advantage, again, we didn't know who, unless somebody wanted to voluntarily tell us, but, um, we would get utilization reports as well, so you could tell at least how often it's being accessed.
Did you have the health benefit program too, similar to what we had? We we had, we had that.
No, well, uh, well, yes, because we initially, but that was basically you attended, when at least the version when I started was, you had to attend your doctors' eyes.
Did you get that Bay Award?
Um, not specifically like that, but there was a version of that where you had to do certain things and and participate in different, but they offered a variety of more things too, so what's.
Did employees participate in that?
Yeah.
I guess that's my point too, is that do we have a different style of employees, because? No. They, we we tried to give them something similar to this, they just didn't take advantage of it. And I think between your concerns, John, that, uh, this may be, some of this may be already covered, but we're just calling other entities. And if it's employee-initiated, will they take advantage of it? I'm a little concerned, I'm a gentleman right into this.
Well. Uh, well, my thinking is, you you'd never if we do this, I would be in favor of doing it for two years as opposed to one year, because I don't think you'd have I don't think you could learn, like, you know, because there's a newness part of it.
I'd say probably five thousand, I'd bet somebody's gonna be educated in the early he has spent five thousand just to make sure that they understand the program.
Definitely market it to your employees, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it also offers legal counsel, legal advice, so you can have them help you with your, um, mortgage, closing of your house, any litigation that you might have to go to through privately, that's another resource that offers.
Well, that probably not gonna give you legal advice, they probably would refer you to.
Yeah. But it's in tandem, I think, where, um, in conversations that I've had, I feel that when they're reading, there's a lot of stress in the organization, especially in the jail, especially in sheriff's office, where they're working a lot of hours, and this is a resource for them to talk to somebody. Uh, obviously, when you get the utilization report, we would look at that and basically assess whether we need to do something different in the way we uh, have our policies and programs and our staffing schedules as well, so it's another indicator for us to respond to keep our workers healthy. And it's in tandem with, I think, isn't the jail doing a hundred million-dollar program to a mental health and medical support for the inmates?
They're working on a contract for these things, yeah.
Yeah, so it's in tandem with that as well for our employees.
So does this, Michael, the program like this, this is affecting insurance rate?
I mean, there wouldn't be a direct connection, I mean,
Well, it's.
Other than potentially arguably, just like the other health things, if you have a healthier workforce, it's they're less likely to have to rely on, obviously, larger scale medical issues or or services that then ultimately through our usage rates might increase our rates as a for.
But I mean, there is the question, uh, when we do a renewal application that asks that you have.
I mean, no, it's not, it's not really, I mean, we do with, I, now, Workers' Comp, we do, because I just just had that that was one of the questions that they specifically asked. So I think from a Workers' Comp standpoint, that does assist a little bit, whether or not it's gonna have a uh, a noticeable effect on our rates, I guess, time will tell when we see what the rates are.
Well, Workers' Comp is a hu- is a huge expense.
So, but in terms of the regular, uh, general health policy, it, I think, would be negative, but Workers' Comp, it could have an impact on again, that was, there's usually like four questions they ask, and that's one, do you have an employee assistance?
It isn't a huge expenditure, but.
No, it isn't, that that's why I was like, it is an experiment, that and it's an experiment that could be done with ARPA Funds instead of, uh, I don't think as we decide today, but I'm thinking, you know, it may make sense, but.
Well, you have an assessment, some kind of assessment program, the other thing you want to talk about today.
Yes.
Assessment of clients, you know, has something to do with this.
Survey that I was.
Neil, excuse me, I'm wondering if we can set this aside and listen to this other one. I wonder if there's some, this assessment that you're going to do can also help us determine whether or not employees take advantage of this.
Oh, that's interesting, yeah, that that's true.
Can we talk a little bit?
So, again, I mean, I've worked with in the past, and and many that I have, it has something called a climate survey, and it's also, you might have heard of it as a satisfaction, employee satisfaction survey, and it usually is done annually, and it's rolled out, it's, the questions are prepared by external and internal, uh, committees um, with a vendor mind, and it basically asks employees many of the same questions each year so that they can trend how we're doing, and it really is looking for how do employees feel about their work, their work environment, their leaders, um, and their own, uh, future opportunities within the organization. And it's important for us to know that from an HR perspective, as well as a leadership perspective, to basically engage where we're moving, or what direction we're moving in, with regards to the fact that we're having right now about three different, four different generations, who have very different expectations of their employer. Uh, and so we use this as a gauge to determine whether we need to do more training, and at what level, and what kind of training, we use it to, uh, figure out why we're using people. We use it to entice people to come work for us, to create our organization as the best in the business, or the best in the region, which would be my goal for the organization. Uh, and so these, uh, climate surveys matter in terms of how we rate relative to ourselves internally, and how we rate, uh, to the world outside. They don't get published to the world outside, but obviously, people who take them and when we review the results, probably will talk about how we're, how we're doing. Um, but it's a really great measurement of what we can do to, uh, continue process improvement, quality, and the employee experience they have here.
So you're saying that, uh, you would be able to have some and put into, uh, questions that you ask.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, uh, there's two ways of doing it, uh, I have, uh, an example of one that I did when I was at Mass Mutual. Uh, the way we did that is we rolled it out with a third party, and then we looked at questions that were less positive and some that were really great, and we took those and we ran focus groups, so we met with employees and asked them, so here's a question that we asked, and this is what the answer was for the results, we'd like to know how we can improve on that, what are your thoughts? And can you tell us why you answered it this way, so that we're clear on why they said the things they said? So we have a little bit more to drill down to. And that was helpful in terms of us addressing those issues, putting together a proposal to the senior leadership, and it was part of that. And, um, basically, made some changes in the organization that we announced, we were very transparent about it, we announced it, and a year later, we were one of the best companies before in the industry. So.
We do the same thing, it, I'll give a, uh, twice a year.
You guys do it twice a year.
Essentially, two, uh, and we call it voice associate. And, uh, so, we, so, survey, it's done. And then, the results come back and, uh, you analyze the, you analyze the information, just like you're saying, and we have a committee, and, uh, there's a couple different things to handle, they'll have a committee, uh, in the end, that looks to address the, uh, the concerns, whatever the issues are, uh, come up with a plan, it's, you know, this, uh, we associate based, uh, ideas, it's not all just covered from the top. And then, uh, we also usually have, uh, at some point in that lawsuit, uh, kind of like town hall kind of things, we'll bring in small groups, like maybe ten or fifteen people, ten or fifteen at a time, usually in our cases, sort of. Go over kind of the results a little bit, just kind of like, get some fea- share the feedback with associates, so it's the same kind of thing that you're.
Yeah, that creates transparency and, uh, trust to management employees, especially if you respond to the issues that are being raised, if you don't, then we have a counter, uh, due to results, uh, which you do not want, but, uh, it gives you the opportunity to say, you know, we, the results of the survey are this, and you share it, and so we like to address these particular issues and drill down a little further and, and see what your thoughts are and how we can respond to this. So they're part of the solution, not the problem, and that's a big deal.
Well, John, being involved, do you see setbacks in the public sector affecting, you know, changes that you don't see in the private sector? I mean, a good example is that if you went to a northern life facility now, you'll see your lobby is huge, they have a few, well, talking about how they don't accept any kind of fiscal and grumble abuse from the public, you know what I mean? So if, if they did want to be, the employees said, one of our major issues is that we've been verbally and physically assaulted by people we deal with, and so they're status quo, but what if the inmate said that? I mean, what if the press and office said that about the inmate? Well, you're not gonna tell the inmate, you're not gonna put the same banner in the lobby that the, uh, the other night did, you know what I'm saying? I'm just wondering if, if some, excuse me, is your background all in the private sector? Is your background all in the private sector?
No, I worked with, uh, United States Postal Service in Washington.
In what service?
United States Postal.
Okay.
But I also worked with, um, the, um, city of Baton, Connecticut.
And these peo- these people had climate surveys?
Yeah, yeah, and I also worked with, um, Purple County in Connecticut. That's where I was from.
Well, I like this, I, I, I'm just wondering what the timeframe is, uh, I think it would be, you know, I, I haven't been around that long, just the information that, you know, give us a real pulse, and I really have no other way of learning the pulse, you know, without more experience, and, and, you know, only time can get that, this might help with that, uh, do you, they, they start this, what's, you know, how quickly do we have, do we get? Just give me a timeline of how this project.
Sure, um, we only have one hundred and twenty, uh, twenty-five employees, so we would take approach of manual, because some people don't have computers, and the majority of the folks would be sent in a survey, and they would be able to fill it out, and once they send it, it would automatically go into a system that would take all of the answers that they give and put it, categorize it, so that it would be, uh, set up like metric. Uh, so we could treat these questions and get a result to that question. Um, once it's done, that could take maybe a week, two weeks, at least.
So that's, it's immediate future.
Yeah, we could do, we could do this within the next three, four weeks, actually. Um, the proposal was to have someone outside do a thing, they're more or capable of doing it than we are, we can do it, and Brittany and I have talked about it, and she's an expert on a, a number of things, but one of them is smart sheets, and smart sheet does this kind of work, so we could use that, and that could be our forum. I think the challenge that when you do it yourself, um, and John, you can speak to this, is trust. Uh, how do I know that what I say here is going to be private? It's going to be the big issue, we do it.
Right.
So it's recommended that we go to a third party to do it.
Well, first of all, for the one you're recommending is, is thirty-five hundred dollars. I don't think that we could do it in thirty-five.
Yeah.
The number of hours. Yeah.
Everybody waits for their jobs.
Yeah.
So for thirty-five hundred dollars, they will come up with questions, so we can review and see what kind of questions, and if there's any issues that might be associated with the questions that you mentioned, uh, we can do that, and then we can put it out there, and they'll put it into their system and roll it out to the employees, so it's the third party that's sending it to them and getting it back from them instead of us.
So, uh, for, can you tailor questions, like, ask about an EAP?
Yeah.
Okay, you can.
But I think you're gonna have to add, add an explanation, because the employees are gonna have it, yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna ask the approach we use, we, we go with the, the climate survey. Through that, we try to get to some sense of whether or not they would, that they would utilize the EAP.
Yeah.
And then, uh, grab the EAP. So, why, what was supposed to benefit of doing this every year? Once you do your first one and you get this, it basically would take a year just to, just to address the issues that you got on the first year.
Um, validation for one thing, because you're going from the same, some of the questions should be the same, very forward, sorry. Uh, and, um, that helps you know from one year to get, that you're getting good information, so it's kind of a Q and A. And then another reason would be to reflect on the fact that you're moving, you're hopefully responding to some of these questions and making changes, so that the next year, we would expect that if there's something that people want, we have started to address it, and so they're recognizing that, so their answer will be a little different the next time. So that's showing that we're moving, we're making progress to responding to employees. And I guess the third one is to start getting used to it, so they know management wants to listen to them, and is asking them, this is an opportunity to ask them, and listen to what they have to say, um.
Let's do it sort of, because if, if they make a complaint, we say frivolous might not be the word, in other words, we say that's not, that's not a quality complaint. Now they're saying, well, I, I tried to tell them, they wouldn't listen, you know what I'm saying, so they're telling us what the problems are, might be their idea of a problem, and after, that's the cost of doing a business, they don't understand, or they don't hear, so, it, it is a two-way sword.
It can be, that's true, that's true, but I think that for the most part, uh, the way I've seen this more well is I believe in transparency, and that's because I've had that experience, uh, and it's basically saying, these are five questions that we have to table, we cannot respond to them right now, because their circumstance could be, uh, stature requires us to do something a certain way, and employees don't like that, but we're required by law to do it that way. So we can make explanations of things that we cannot change, and that we have to table until either there's other things that changed before, and and then communicate that, and so that's one of the ways that most organizations respond to that scenario.
Just like better communication, things that he said, uh, some people might be like, yeah, this needs to kind of like this. And short, the short answer is tough, right? But that's not really how you should respond to it, you shouldn't listen to it, and so, uh, and understand it and try to explain the position, and then try to come up with alternatives and like.
Well.
I mean, that's. So find a survey with, uh, an emphasis in there on EAP, and let's go.
Well, and I gotta tell you, I would, uh, we do something similar to this, it's called employee engagement, and you know, when, when it was first presented to us, I thought, you know, this seems like a waste of time, but it was kind of, it was kind of pushed, and, uh, I gotta tell you, I learned a lot from it. You know, and I, I think this might be, and, you know, hope, and the rea- one of the reasons I was asking about timing is, you know, if this is something that could be done before the end of the year, and we get some results, and we thought, hmm, this, you know, then we have, we can do, you know, fund another year using ARPA, and if we think, well, we didn't get much out of this, then we, you know, I, I don't think it's an expensive experiment, so.
I know I put you guys on the spot, but you've all got a bunch of employees, what, how do you think they would respond to this?
Um, I think it could go a couple different ways, uh, you have, you know, somebody that's a little disgruntled, you might get an answer just behind that, I think, I, I don't think we've ever done anything like this before, so I think it may be met with some skepticism at first, uh, but, I mean, if there's a good faith, that, you know, we're not gonna change the world, but you wanna hear what, you know, what drives you to come to work or not, wanna come to work? I think that might be helpful, there's certain things that I'll see, you know. On my end of it, there's contractually that we can't just something change, but, uh, but, uh, but they also have that opportunity to change that during, you know, negotiations, so I, I think it'd be helpful just to to see, you know, what, what they think.
Dennis?
Well, when I worked at the hospital in Bangor, we had this employee engagement every quarter. You met with the vice president in a, in a, uh, uh, like a large, uh, room, and there was an update on the board's agenda, and uh, they sought employee input going forward for almost anything, and it was. Yeah, you've got good employee participation? It was, everyone went, it was mandatory. Oh, mandatory? So you did, on yours, they had three shifts, on your shift, you were assigned a meeting place and, uh, a time that you would attend, and you. Kind of had to, voluntary. You went there, so it was kind of, and that was again, kind of the pushback they got was, you know, uh, we appreciate employee engagement, but you're treating us like cattle. And, uh, in the beginning, it was like, kind of, some people voiced umbrage, others appreciation, but, uh, at the end, you knew where everyone stood. Well, these things are always, well, it's like, it might happen, this kind of thing is always voluntary, they can do it or they're not doing it, but you do, uh, it's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of, I can't say pressure, but, uh, if you're gonna have to sell it, sell it to not just delete the email or whatever, because, you know, we have the same kind of thing, like, we kind of, we see a percentage of the employees, we, we don't know who's done it, and we can't pastor people too hard. I mean, I'll ask people, like, yeah, have you done a survey yet? Yeah, if they say no, so I don't care, it's fine, whatever, but we do know our percentage of people, uh, who have participated in the survey, and we have like a certain percentage of them that we're supposed to try to get to, I forget, it's probably like eighty percent or eighty-five percent, so they make sense, it's, um, so if we're not hitting it, like, we like, try to keep, we find people who, you know, who, so, well, I'm just saying, you're gonna have to like, you can turn it on to, to get them going.
Well, and to me, the timing is right, Dennis, now, Michael, I, I know it, that's for sure.
He's old.
Still pretty, you know what I mean, I, I just think the timing might be right. So, uh, I'm gonna move to approve hiring third-party independent contractors, CMA, to conduct the climate survey uh, for Hancock County for the sum of thirty-five hundred dollars, such funds to be paid for using ARPA.
Second, what is in favor?
Aye, 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 and that is the one you recommend.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and as far as the first item, I'm not ruling the first item out, but, you know, we might learn something from this, but, yeah, it's gonna be.
Still, you still have time.
Yeah, I still, I think we still have time, John said, you agree?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And it could be that the skepticism, we can be frozen out with the, with the climate survey, and results to that, and they, we, that would be EAP that they would accept because of the good experience they had with the climate.
And just to let you know, when this painted on our agenda, people, a lot of folks don't think that the outside looks at our agenda, but they thought we were gonna be talking climate.
No, I, to be honest with you, I, I thought about that when I was trying to develop the agenda, like, how do I convey that without people thinking we're talking about, well.
I had, I had a guy come in and say, what are you guys doing, or, I'm like, I don't, I read this over, I, I, it took me a while to figure out he was talking about this.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, Dennis, I've said this too many times, but I'm opposed to dealing with anything we have no authority over, no responsibility to. So if someday you say, you know, I'd really like to have you guys get involved in, in global warming and climate change, so much, you know what I mean?
Drawing the lines.
Don't, don't verge it over, or, or, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I, you were given a pretty comprehensive list of, uh, what these staff members in treasurer's office. So basically just look and see what action you're willing, or if you have questions, whatever you'd like to take.
Well, no, we should have had sort of asked you two things.
Yeah, kind of, yes.
Yeah, so. So I'm gonna move to approve the purchase of equipment and office supplies as presented for the human resources treasurer and commissioners' office for a total cost not to exceed seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to be paid from ARPA funds.
Second motion, what's your favorite?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
All right, so it gave you a long line involving the DA and, and Washington County and myself chiming in, and, uh, eventually, this basically summarizes, but the bottom line, it comes down to how the DA is going to bill Washington County and how he's going to bill Hancock County, and basically, the bottom line is, and he, he spelled it out in one of the various emails he sent, basically, does each county absorb a hundred percent of the travel, is this strictly related to travel that's related to their county, or does each county, does it still own fifty percent, each county pays fifty percent? But at a minimum, again, to the point that I think I clearly made, that no more of this, we're paying a hundred percent of our travel, we get nothing from Washington County, and then we have to turn around and pay fifty percent of Washington County. So what I'm looking for is direction from you, I mean, I'm still waiting to hear back from Washington County's administrator of when we can meet, when their treasurer is available, the bottom line is.
How can you put in that request?
Oh, well, I mean, they came back, that was like, well over a week ago or so anyway, and I've been waiting back for response, so, um, yeah, I just need to know what direction you prefer to go, so that's gonna be the one that I'm gonna argue for, and then, as you can see with, from the DA, at the end of the day, he doesn't necessarily care, it's not his dog, he's gonna bill somebody, the question is, is, you know, it's Washington County, Hancock County figure it out, but honestly, I'm not gonna recommend we continue to pay fifty percent invoices if, if they're not gonna pay fifty percent of the week, so.
Well, well.
Or vice versa, I mean, if they wanna go a hundred percent, I'm fine with recommending a hundred percent, but it's gotta be.
I wholeheartedly agree with you and support what you say, and I agree with the, um, the DA. The question is, if we say this is the way it is, and they don't pay, who's paying?
Who's paying?
Yeah, let's say this is the way it is, and Washington County says, we're not doing that, what happens?
Well.
Well, that's, that's, so they got us over a barrel, they know it, not necessarily.
Because the reality is, if they only wanna pay fifty percent, then they still has fifty percent in invoice to travel out there. That's an outstanding bill and obligation to Hancock County. So, yeah, I mean, do they wanna get involved in a prolonged legal dispute with us? I mean, basically, i- i- and the easiest way around that is we just do fifty percent, fifty percent, and, and that's the bottom line, and all of District Seven business, no matter what the DA's doing, whatever the DA's working on, you know, that's, that's the easiest way around it, and if they don't pay fifty percent, then we don't pay, and nobody's getting paid, so. And eventually, we take the truck back from the DA, and then we defaulted on the same obligation that we have to actually pay for all these services. I mean, that's the argument that the DA is trying to be included in, you're obligated to support my travel in that dispute. So that's the bottom line, I mean, at the end of the day, we're obligated to pay, they're obligated to pay. It's just a question upon the circumstances of when it applies and how much you tend to want to pay, which again, is why he falls back to us and says, you guys figure it out, it's not my problem, I'm gonna bill you for my time, but who pays for it, I don't care.
Well, and quite frankly, I'd rather have the DA prosecuting, you know, criminals than I were dealing with this kind of stuff, uh, how, uh, let's say, you. let's say you, you tell, this is, this is the direction I've been given by, by commission. The, the Washington counter comes in with something opposite. Is there, can you reach out to main judicial or whoever and say, hey, this is what's happening? I mean, I, I.
I mean, I don't think there's gonna be a third party that ultimately gonna come in and solve our issue, in my opinion. Unless you want to try to say, well, we want to go to arbitration or whatever, mediation, I'd say, with, with you to try to resolve this issue.
Are there other, uh, officers, DAs that are out on counties like this?
Yeah, I mean, there's similar for those that have, based on my recollection of past conversations, when you've been in here, that those that have districts where they have multiple entities, that, I mean, it's not acting out of the ordinary in terms of how we pay them. And counties have just paid it in the past, I guess, not, you know, for the reason, I think part of what precipitated this was the fact that now.
We want.
Yeah, and it's counting this gonna be out. See, in the past, it would have been the DA that would have been getting that direct reimbursement, and they're not gonna likely skip the DA on the reimbursement for travel, because that's even more apparent that they're obligated to do it.
So we sort of.
Well, to a degree, yeah, we create an issue for ourselves, I guess, if you all look at that line.
The issue, the issue really is, uh, the first one is that when he leaves here and goes to Washington County for Washington County business, they should be paying a hundred percent, they're only paying fifty, is that correct?
And then they expect Hancock County to kick in the other fifty percent.
Right, and they're only paying fifty, so we got to pay the other fifty. Now, is there an issue with him leaving here and going to Chester for District Seven business, District Half?
Seven, as I understand, they don't have a problem with splitting that up fifty percent.
So is the only issue, when he leaves here and goes to Washington County for Washington County business, they're not paying a hundred percent of the cost? That's the only issue?
Well, the only, the only issue, as I understand, is, is the half of the cost that they choose to, because basically Washington County is told to only reimburse Hancock County for half the travel cost to Hancock County when his staff travels to, to work to Washington County.
So, so, yes. Yes, right, so the only issue is, is that when he goes to Washington County, they should be paying a hundred percent instead of fifty.
And that's driving our truck.
I know, and I'm just trying to, trying to identify the issue. Is, is there another issue besides that?
So, I mean, to melt it down, it comes down to who's paying for what travel, so.
Try to identify.
I understand that, but what I'm saying to you is, yes, they're, they're saying basically, we should only be paying fifty percent of that travel.
And they should be paying a hundred?
I- i- if you want to break it down that way, then yes, it's.
Well, how much would you break it down?
Well, the argument is, just District Seven, we don't decide today that I'm going on Hancock County business, or I'm going on Washington County business. We decide today that District Seven is District Seven. So I send a bill out that includes all my travel. Hancock County pays fifty percent of the total bill for that period. Washington County pays fifty percent, and we don't care where you went after that. It's just fifty percent split.
Well, see.
So, again, there, there's three different variations here. You have fifty percent split on District Seven. That's your one pretty straightforward fifty percent. Doesn't matter where he's going, why he's going. You have Hancock County business, you have Washington County business, hundred percent. So we pay a hundred percent of Hancock County business that the DA says is Hancock County business, we pay a hundred percent. DA says Washington County business, Washington County pays a hundred percent. With reimbursement now, though, instead of going to the DA, we'll come back to the county, which is the rub there. And then the third option is, we pay fifty percent of travel to Washington County, and they pay fifty percent of travel to Hancock County, and it ends up being a hundred percent, you know?
Michael, when Toth leaves Washington County, it comes up here, we paying, they paying, we're paying a hundred percent of the.
So that rate now, that's, that's, that's the way I understand.
This, so they have an assistant district attorney that lives in Washington County, and he comes up here to handle Hancock County's cases, we're paying a hundred percent of that. We're paying all this, Mike, right, Monica?
I believe so.
But when we have an attorney up here that goes to Washington County handling cases down there, they're only paying fifty percent. So there, there is the inequity there. So the issue is, is that you can treat District Seven as District Seven for everybody. Or it's Hancock and Washington County business separated, you pay the cost of your county. That's the issue, so. I personally don't care, except that because the DA lives in Hancock County, he's going to Washington County more often. When he goes to Washington County for a Washington County case, it, that happens more often than him handling Hancock County cases. But there is a good chance, not a good chance, but there is a chance they're gonna close the Cal's branch. So he no longer have to go to Cal's and be able to adjust. The other thing is, is there'll be a change in the commission down there come January first. So, do we wait and try to deal with a new board down there? Or is this?
Well, no.
I think it's best, if I was gonna pick one of the two options, I'd try to have it still, I'd still let it be that, I'm like, Washington County business, they pay a hundred percent rather than try to do uh, we just get, uh, because you got the argument, that's it, just to see population differences between the two counties. Obviously, there's a considerable difference between the two. So if the argument would be, well, that population is less, there's fewer cases, whatever. Then if we just have it stick along with actual business, you can't say they're paying for what we should.
Well, the, the thing is, though, is that there are more, a lot more cases to Hancock County than Washington County. Yeah, so we're, the, the district attorney is requiring the attorney from Washington County to come to Hancock County to try.
More often.
Lot more often than, because he's going to Washington County. But the aggravated factor is that needles from Washington County, he's got to sometimes look at Cal's. And Toth comes only from the Giants. So I, it's, it's, it is a threat, but it's, it's still inevitable that it's being done.
Well, and, and one of the, so I agree with John, except to me, it's either gotta be what John says, or we split everything evenly. And if we split everything evenly, well, we got a car and a gas card to talk about, too.
What happens, I think, is he submits the mileage and then they just pay half.
Yeah.
So.
So.
We're not collecting the other half of that.
Well, and so we're paying.
But when, when Toth submits a bill, we're only paying half of his, too. Toth is gonna have to do with Washington County, what we're doing, what Bob's doing with, with, uh, his bill, and that he gives half, get to one county, and that get to the other.
Yeah, but then, both being run by the same, the DA is running the office. Toth is not running his own office, right?
Nevertheless, though, he's, he's better than enterprise. And if we're gonna pay a hundred percent of Toth coming up here, then they're gonna have to pay a hundred percent of it, or even if he goes down there.
Which is what we're doing, which is what we're trying to do.
Well, trying, trying. I say, I guess that's what you do as a, you know?
The only other part of this, again, getting back to what you started with, uh, Mr. Barry, is that how far are you willing to go if they continue to do what they're only doing, even though you've made the statement that we're only gonna pay a hundred percent of our travel, not gonna pay any of your travel, and vice versa?
So, Michael, first of all, you haven't talked face to face yet.
No, oh, I love.
Let's say we won't turn the call off.
I mean, I'm just waiting for them to give me a date and a time, and I'll drive my, all the way down there if I have to, just, just so we can have the conversation.
Change into the mileage order.
Yeah, I don't usually bill for that one, I will.
Uh, I think, too, that you've got to stress that there's gotta be a conversation between you and the, between this. He's got to tell you face to face, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna.
She.
Well, the administrator, yeah, she's gonna have to say, basically, I mean, if you, again, listen to what you've seen or read what you've seen from the, the DA, he felt that the commissioners down there were on board with that, so he's, doesn't understand initially why they're using so many issues.
But, well, there's enough, the only issue that has to do with money is driving all the decisions. They're looking at thirty-four percent increases, that's like twenty-five, too.
Well, so, we're, we're doing, they, 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 they're, everything they're doing right today is, is, they're using that as a, I won't say excuse, but that is a factor. So in terms of equitable, your basic feeling is, it's fair that if it's Hancock County business, we pay a hundred percent.
We agree with you.
And basically, that is really arguably would be favorable to them more on, not, that's the basic gist. But at least we know we're paying for our cause and they're paying for theirs. That's the bottom line. And then mutual stuff that can be shared or is supposed to be shared amongst the district, we both are paying fifty percent.
Well, and even at that, we're being more than fair, because we bought the car and we, you know, that's our decision, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, I hopefully will be able to report back in two weeks that we met, and either they're gonna come back with a counter to that, or they'll maybe have some magical solution here that none of us are thinking about. But I will let you know. I'll obviously let them know your preference right now, is that, I just decided.
Well.
Citizens of Hancock County.
Yeah, to me, it's, it's gonna be one more.
All right, thank you.
So we're gonna be, what we had to do to, uh, are we ready to go to executive session?
I think we should be ready.
Okay, so I'm gonna, uh, move to go to an executive session as permitted by One MRSA Section four oh five six C. It's premature disclosure of the information of prejudice, the competitive requirement position of the commission. Also pursuant to One MRSA Section four oh five six C, consultation between a board of commissioners and its attorney concerning legal rights and duties of the board.
Second motion, what's in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, we're coming out in executive session to report. Do we have any county administrator comments?
I do have one, and I haven't had a chance to follow up on this yet, but I'm late yesterday afternoon, I did have a phone call, uh, voicemail on my machine from, uh, Lydia Simon from the, uh, planning commission, saying that they had tried already once to put together some type of regional discussion on solid waste disposal for Hancock County. Didn't have a lot of luck, but now they've been able to obtain some seed funding for looking into solid waste issues some more. They're setting up, uh, establishing a steering committee to kind of look at this, to have those conversations with municipalities. And they want a county voice to sit on that steering committee as well. She reached out to me, but I'm just conveying that to all of you in case one of you would like to be involved. And if not, then by default, I assume that just goes back to me, but.
So, my guess is they're gonna do this through some, like, league of towns or, or some more regional.
They're hand, regionally, they're gonna try to handle the issue or cooperate and at least have the discussions take place where it ends up. I mean, I, I, I don't know, but I think they want to at least try to move the discussion out there so that they can have some type of, uh, collaborative approach as to how, what the issues are and can they be solved. Now, obviously, the question is, what level involvement do they want the county? Do they want you at the table so that the county will take over that responsibility? I, I, you know, I can't tell you that.
Well, on statute, it's a municipality.
Yeah, I mean, it's their issue, it's just a ques, just like, same thing, statute with an ACO is still municipality, but doesn't mean the county couldn't be involved in some way, and I'm not suggesting, they're suggesting that either. The only thing I had so far is like, initial conversation way back when, when they said, you know, that it's an issue, which it is all across the state right now.
Of the country.
Well, but, uh, you know, now they're actually trying, they've been able to, I guess, get money to allow somebody on their staff to devote time to this. This is kind of the way that I'm interpreting this, so that they want to try to get a group together and see if they can get any traction.
Well, I say, let's see how close they get to forming a group, and then if they, if they do actually do it, then we got something to talk about.
So do you want me to participate in those initial discussions, or tell them we don't need a seat at the table?
Uh, no, I think it might make sense for you to at least listen, right?
Well, I mean, I, right now, I'm taking that they want the county to send a rep there to be their part of the conversations, how involved we are. Again, I can't do anything without all the great people.
That's why I think it's better that you're there.
But, yeah, I mean, the question is, i- i- if offered a whole seat on steering committee, do you, do you want me to sit in on that position? I mean, that, just like anything else, doesn't mean that I can't withdraw, resign, or whatever, or anything else, so.
What's your gut feeling?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's an issue, and I would hate it to not at least be there to listen and hear what, what the conversation is. So at minimum, obviously, I'd like to do that. I don't have a problem sitting by the table. Uh, but obviously, I'll make it very clear from the start that the county commissioners haven't committed to anything related to this. And nor will I be committing anything on your behalf, so, uh, at least until conversations take place.
You said that they, they tried this before.
Supposedly, they tried to get a group of municipalities together to discuss concerns related to solid waste. Uh, and I know they were trying to set up a meeting, I never saw anything on it, I mean, so I don't.
Well, there'll be issues with solid waste, you know, that's what, on topic. Because I can tell you that it's a form of consortium of all the towns in Hancock County, and what is entity to oversee that. That is exactly what we should be doing, just like the ACOs.
Well, that's sort of.
Much bigger, bigger term.
What's sort of what the Canadian disposal district is.
Except just the I O.
No, there's Canadian disposal district, there's, I don't know all the entities, but, no, they're, they're.
Off island too?
Yes, I mean, that, I think that's the effort they're talking about.
Well, I think they're probably trying to ask Kane, like, what's the most cost-effective way to, to, to be able to do that. And yes, there's probably more entities, I would assume, by Harbor region, obviously set up much better than maybe some of the more rural areas and the UT. I mean, that's the other part of this, too, the county involvement with the non-organized territories.
Well, the, the Canadian disposal district, for instance, by Harbor, not part of it anymore, because they, they, you know, I should say, when I was there, it was more advantageous for the municipality to deal with it itself than it was through the Canadian disposal district. And maybe that's changed, you know, I don't know that, but, but, yeah, I think it's important that we be there, but, you know, there, there, there is, they're right, there's history there. There's actually entities involved in it. And, you know, I, I don't think to be reinventing the wheel, but we don't know that.
Yeah, we don't even know what the conversation is.
Yes.
I think, I think it's very wise that Michael stay involved with the ground.
I do, too.
Because if for some reason, someday we do get involved, this guy has some stuff that could have had that groundwork behind this stuff.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, thank you.
Comments for future agenda items from commissioners?
In looking at the hours scheduled and whatnot, in the BAC schedule, they meet again tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
The third.
Is on the thirtieth.
Thirty is for final vote if necessary.
Basically, well, I mean, it will be necessary, because we won't have, if their past practice keeps with what they've been doing, they're gonna change payroll items for these departments coming up as well. So if they do that, we really won't have the final numbers on everything clean for them until the thirtieth.
Okay, so if, if on the thirtieth, they have their final vote, what happens then, Michael?
So, you at that point could have part of your meeting in November, like this first meeting in November, a discussion about, you know, what action they take and what the budget looks like from the BAC and what you want to kind of do with it. I believe we scheduled for the second special meeting, the timetable is for the public informational session, dealing with the BAC budget, but that's just related to the BAC budget. So anything you're doing after that doesn't impact that public informational session, because that's only supposed to be on what the BAC's budget was.
It's too early to do that with the sixth, though, right?
Well, I mean, yeah, I, in terms of getting it back and then having the advertisements and all that, that's why we traditionally have waited for that second.
It's almost like in your face whatnot, to say, okay, we're gonna meet on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Nineteenth of public hearing, and then soon as that's over, we. Nineteenth for public hearing, and then soon as that's over, we, we vote on, on the budget, it's like, I don't care what you just said.
I believe we did that last year. I mean, it's not desire, but I think the commission's been open, let me in the beginning, that if you felt it was something that needed to be done in the majority of your favor, then that might happen.
So you, you'd schedule a public hearing on the budget on the nineteenth?
So I think it was that, whatever that Tuesday was of that, or.
Second Tuesday, yeah.
At least that's ten, I mean, it's nothing to say you couldn't, but that pushes it back to December, and you have to have it by, by a certain date.
Fifteenth.
Well, that's when the final vote has to take place, you have to have the information session meeting before the end of that, before you take a final vote, so.
Informational, as opposed to something other than the nineteenth?
Yeah, well, no, the nineteenth would be the public, so you have to have that meeting before, before the fifteenth as well, so it's within so many days after they complete the budget process and turn it back over to you, you have to have that meeting on the informational. And that would be. Yeah, I mean, so presumably, that would be that, that.
Fourteen days, seventeen. Thirteen days. I'm just curious, is, is what we're thinking about having that final vote on the budget? I think it could be the nineteenth.
Well, I mean, in, in theory, I guess, if you made all the changes and you had that to remember, then you could.
Do you see us doing anything on the sixth of November?
November? I mean, the fifth, I would think the first. I would think that you could, or at least have the discussions about areas that you want to home in on.
Yeah.
And then you would make your final decision after probably the public informational session in November, and then you could sign after that, but the way that we had it built in was to have that first meeting in December, where you, because you have to have it by the fifteenth, or you'd have to call a special meeting before the fifteenth in December, so we had you final approval of whatever the budget is, and that first meeting in December is what it's set up for.
So we might discuss it twice, the fifth and the twelfth, and then finalize it on December?
Well, we'd be up to, so, let me, let me grab my book here real quick.
Fifth and the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Fifth and the nineteenth, I mean.
So, yeah, and then you would do your final vote after the nineteenth, on a clean final copy, you'd have all the LD ones, you'd have all the tax stuff, you'd have everything, basically, what your final budget's going to be at that.
So we really have made up a line on the nineteenth, which is voted on the sixth.
Yeah, on final version, yeah, so you would make any, presumably, yeah, so I guess it's really your approach, you could make decisions concrete, say, November, first meeting, this is where we're at, we make all those changes, and we have that setting on the side, but you know, on the nineteenth, when, you know, your second meeting in the public informational session, that's just going to be solely on the VAC budget, and at that point, they'll know you're already going to make changes, or you wait till after the public information.
Isn't easy for you, but if we did a preview on the third, we really finalized the numbers on the nineteenth, gave you time to put it all in form, and then voted on the, the third.
That's the final budget, ideally, yeah, I would say that's the best approach.
No reason, no reason we couldn't, we're going to get them, you're going to have the budget back to you, the, the recommendations from the U C back to you on the thirtieth, and you can have that ready for us on the sixth, something like that.
And you might even have some recommendations to bring forward.
From you or me? After the VAC.
Yeah, yeah.
We can take the red pencil, so.
Oliver, you have anything else?
I'm all good. Mr. John, sign the motion.
That's a favor?
Aye.